Agenda item eight is consideration of approval of a proclamation declaring the week of May 20th, 2012 as Elks Law and Order Week. Any questions for council? Seeing none, we'll seek a motion. Councilman Hayton.
I move that we approve a proclamation declaring the week of May 20th, 2012 as Elks Law and Order Week.
We have a motion and a second call for the vote. Motion carries, thank you. Agenda item nine is consideration of approval of a resolution number 731, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mesquite adopting an interlocal agreement between the City of Mesquite and the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada for bus stop sign installation and maintenance with the City of Mesquite. Mr. Sawyer.
Yes, basically what this agreement does is RTC is going to pay for bus stop signage and also the maintenance on it, and staff recommend approval of it.
Any questions for Mr. Sawyer? Seeing none, we'll seek a motion. Mr. Gus Davison.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve resolution number 721, adopting the interlocal agreement with the RTC for bus stop sign installation and maintenance.
731, yeah.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second call for the vote. Motion carries. Agenda item 10 is consideration of approval of resolution number 732, a resolution directing the city treasurer to give notice of cancellation of sale of property subject to the lien of delinquent assessment and providing other matters properly related thereto. Ms. Melendez.
Basically, this is really good news. This means that all the cities have been paid up in full as of today, and so that's why we'd like to cancellation itself.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Melendez? Seeing none, we'll seek a motion. Councilman Raxton.
Move to approve resolution number 732 to give notice for cancellation of sale of property subject to lien of delinquent assessment, providing other matters properly related thereto.
Becca. We have a motion and a second call for the vote. Motion carries, thank you. Agenda item 11 is consideration of approval of resolution number 733, supporting a regional reorganization plan for the establishment of a new regional economic development authority for the Southern Nevada region. Mr. Baker.
This resolution before you this evening has been heard in other municipalities throughout Southern Nevada. What it does is it expresses the City of Mesquite's support in the formation of this new regional development authority. This entity has not been formed, but expresses our support of it as it forms. It will take the place of Nevada Development Authority, the current regional economic development organization. Happy to answer any other questions.
To answer one quickly, we will still have a seat on their board.
That's correct. It's an executive committee.
Any questions for Mr. Baker? Seeing none, Councilman Gus Davison, do you have a question?
I don't have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
There's a steering committee that has been formed, and I noticed that we have no representation on the steering committee. Is there reason for that?
The steering committee was formed months ago, probably eight to nine months ago, and to be quite candid with you, I do not know why we were not invited. However, we are invited at this point, as soon as we found out the formation of it. I've been involved in the practitioners group, which has helped draft the art piece of middle of the state, and we will be involved on the executive committee as it goes forward with the actual operation.
And I have been in one of those meetings, Councilman.
We will officially have somebody named on the committee.
As the organization forms, there will be, yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Baker? Seeing none, we'll seek a motion. Councilman Hayton?
Move that we approve resolution number 733.
We have a motion and a second call for the vote. Motion carries, thank you. Agenda item 12, our mayor's comments. Just have one, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for reinstituting the Mayor's Breakfast. It's been a long time since we've had one over in Mesquite. I quite frankly don't remember the last time we had one, it was a number of years ago. But I had a great time, it was all in good fun, and I do appreciate the opportunity to get and talk with members of the community in a less formal way, but I do appreciate it, thank you, and look forward to being part of it next year. Item 12A is a report by the Bureau of Land Management. Do you want to come forward?
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Mayor Joe Rudwell, I'm the district manager for the Bureau of Land Management, Southern Nevada District. I'm here tonight just to provide a brief update on a trespass cattle gather that you probably heard about in the community and probably read about in the media. As background, since 1993 branded and unbranded cattle have been in trespass on public lands that are administered by the Bureau of Land Management, our Las Vegas field office, and also on the National Park Service's Lake Mead National Recreation Area. We've made repeated attempts to try to elicit compliance, voluntary compliance, from Mr. Clyde and Bundy to remove these cattle. The United States District Court for the District of Nevada issued a permanent injunction and ordered him to remove his cattle in the late 90s. The Interior Board of Land Appeals also affirmed BLM's decision that canceled his range improvements that were located on the public lands. Gatherers of livestock are really a last resort for us. We try very hard to get folks that are not in compliance to voluntarily become compliant. Mr. Bundy has not had a permit since the early 90s in this area. In April, we had scheduled an operation where we were going to remove approximately 750 head of cattle, and just before this operation occurred, I was informed that it had been suspended indefinitely. Our intention was to gather the cattle and return the branded cattle to the owner or owners of those cattle, and then to give all estray or unbranded cattle to the State of Nevada Department of Agriculture per Nevada state law. Many of the people have asked me why the BLM decided to try to do an operation after this trespass had been occurring for almost 20 years. My response is that I don't really know what my predecessors did before I got to Southern Nevada. I arrived in 2008, and this is one of the first things that I was briefed on when I got to Southern Nevada in my current job. And for me, I looked at this as something that had gone on for many years and had not been resolved. And for me, it's two things. Number one, a trespass, a willful trespass, is not fair to the many thousands of ranchers and other users of the public lands that follow the rules and pay their fees as a regular course of doing business. And the authorization that Mr. Bundy had in the early 90s was for 152 head of cattle. There are now anywhere between 750 and 800 cattle in the area. Because the operation was suspended, the question, the other question that had been asked is what are we doing now? What we're doing now is working with state, local, and federal officials to try to go back to court and get a refreshed, more current, and more comprehensive court order that would order him to remove the cattle from public land. As always, we would prefer voluntary compliance, and my door is always open to have a discussion with Mr. Bundy to try to affect that voluntary compliance. As I was coming in this evening, the mayor asked me to talk a little bit about wilderness. There are currently two designated wilderness areas in the Gold Butte area. One is called Lime Canyon, the other is called Jumbo Springs. It's important to note that wilderness is designated by Congress. Mayor Joe Rudwell, BLM in Nevada, does not have the power to do that. That's not our job. Our job is just to plan and manage lands based on whatever Congress decides to do. In Gold Butte, there are also a wilderness study area and what's called an instant study area. The wilderness study area is called Million Hills, and the instant study area is Virgin Peak. Both of those were designated prior to now, and in the early 90s, the BLM recommended to Congress that it would be more appropriate that these two areas be released to multiple use, but Congress has not taken any action on those two areas. So currently, the only designated wilderness areas in Gold Butte are Lime Canyon and Jumbo Springs. Those two designated areas, we are currently working on management plans for both of those, and we had a series of public meetings last year. We're also currently working on a resource management plan revision for Southern Nevada. And that, the job, one of the things that we have to do in that is if citizens provide us wilderness proposals, we have to evaluate those proposals. But again, we cannot designate wilderness. We just evaluate the proposals and make recommendations to Congress based on that. I think the other thing that I wanted to mention is that, you know, the Gold Butte area currently is managed by the Bureau of Land Management. It is not designated, but it is a very, very special area. Right now, we are working with the local communities to try to establish some plans for very simple infrastructure that would allow the area to be better used by the public and protect the really amazing resources that exist there. And the kinds of things we're talking about are just areas to park, vault toilets, picnic areas, some places where people can camp, things like that. Nothing elaborate or highly developed. And that's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rudwell. Agenda item 13, city council comments and staff reports. Any comments, Councilman Witheldner?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items. I don't know if anybody in the audience or at home had the opportunity to be at the Casablanca event center this past weekend. We had the National Golden Gloves Championships, and I've got to tell you, it was an absolutely fabulous event, and they had over 300 amateur boxers from all over the country that showed as participants, and probably another 200 officials with the Golden Gloves organizations to accompany those boxers and participate in the competition. It was very well received, it was very well attended, and hats off to Mesquite Gaming and whoever else was personally involved in it. And as a second item, I would like to take the opportunity to formally introduce Mr. Andy Barton, our new city manager. He's been on the job for a whole two days, and I hope he's going to stay. So far, we haven't deterred him. Andy, stand up and say hello, please. Thank you. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hayton?
I would just like to thank all those who volunteered, participated in Mesquite Days, and also the National Day of Prayer, great events, and there's a lot of volunteer hours. And I just personally want to thank all of you for the effort that you put forth to make Mesquite the great place that it is.
Seeing none, we'll close agenda item 13. Move on to item number 14, which is consideration of approval of a Class A, Class II secondhand dealer license for Matthew John to be located at 799 West Mesquite Boulevard. Mr. Sawyer.
Yes, Mr. John is asking for a Class II secondhand dealer's license. He wants to purchase used electrical appliances and tools for the customer. This is not a pawn shop. A pawn shop has other state requirements, and it also makes loans, so this is not a pawn.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sawyer? Councilman Gus Davison.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. I think technically I brought up a concern, but I'd like to bring it up again to see if we can get an answer for it. As I understand, this is a small building that's next door to the little car loss, is that correct?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know how many square feet are in there, but it's a very, very small, small building. This is right on the main street of Mesquite, so I have some concerns that if we were going to have a lot of appliances and stuff, where are they going to be displayed? Are they going to be displayed outside, or are they going to be brought in in accordance with our city regulations every night? It seems somewhat, it kind of concerns me that there may be a problem if I really work that out. The building doesn't seem to be, to me, to be adequate for the use that we're...
He's not buying a lot of equipment. Most of this stuff is new. I think it'll be less than 10% is going to be actually used, and he will be required to put inside this store.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Raxton?
There's no more comments, I've got to make a motion.
Let me check and see. Any more questions for Mr. Sawyer on this item? Seeing none, go ahead, Mr. Raxton.
Move to approve category A, Class II secondhand dealer license for Matthew John.
Second. We have a motion and a second call for the vote. Motion carries. Agenda item 15 is consideration of approval of a gaming license and slot route operator license for United Coin Machine Company for the location of 380 North San Diego Boulevard, Peggy Sue's. Again, Mr. Sawyer.
Yes, Mr. Woodson is, Junior is asking for a slot route operator's license. Background investigation has been done, staff recommend we will...
Any questions for Mr. Sawyer? Seeing none, we'll seek a motion. Councilman Gus Davison.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve a gaming license and slot, the gaming and slot route operating license application for United Coin Machine Company, subject to Nevada Gaming Commission approval.
Councilman Witheldner has a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second call for the vote. Motion carries, thank you. Agenda item 16 is discussion and possible direction to staff regarding the use of a community development block grant, CDBG, to fund the building of a water play area project at Haven Park Trailhead. Mr. Dangerfield.
Mayor and council, my name is Brian Dangerfield, Director of Athletics and Leisure Services. Before I get into this item, I'd really like to thank my staff, particularly Nick Montoya for the work he did over Mesquite Days weekend, and Vicky Anderson, Randy Lob and the staff, they just did a fantastic job. And it's that staff who has put together some ideas. About four years ago, May of 2009, the staff put together a list of community development block grant projects, and Mike Callahan, who's our liaison to Clark County Community Development Block Grant, is here to answer any questions you have about that process. But what we identified was Haven Park is an area where we have our city pond, fishing pond, a beautiful area, and a park that could be utilized by younger families if we had a safer area for them to play. And the community development block grant program identified this as one of the priorities. We have some money, and we're proposing tonight for you to give us direction as to whether or not we should pursue this project, look into it, and to have staff possibly be the construction manager on this project, and so forth. If you have any questions, me or Mike would be happy to address them.
Thank you. Mr. Dangerfield. Councilman Gus Davison.
I see Mike is coming to the microphone. There actually are two options, and I guess for the audience's understanding, it would be a good idea if we could talk about option A and option B and what they both entail.
Option A would be to direct staff to create a request for qualifications in order to begin the process of identifying qualified firms who could build this for us. As it says here, the method of designing, building, and pricing the water play area project at the Haven Trailhead Park. Or option B would to do, would be to do nothing with the grant monies.
Mr. Dangerfield, just a quick question. Councilman, are you, Councilman Gus Davison, did that answer your question? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I think Mike's going to go into the details anyway, so...
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Callahan.
Just to remind council, back in 2009, I believe this one of the year was, previous council approved a five-year capital improvement plan for community development block grant money, and this project is now the remaining number one priority. We had a modification along the way in Bill Abachi, Abachi Court behind the senior center, but this money is available. The City of Mesquite is a designated city, so we get money from community development block grant every year based on our population and the amount of money that Clark County receives. Can't tell you exactly how much that is, but that money has been, in the last five years that I've been involved in this, from 151,000 to 212,000 or something, it's a high year. So it is money that we can use for projects that are approved by the board. That you, you're the board that approved the five-year capital improvement plan, and this is the next project on the plan. So I think what Brian said earlier is true. You spend the money that's given to us by the federal government on the projects. If you don't like the project, there's a process, and we could go back for amendment in the capital improvement plan, but I don't think that's real likely to fly at this point in time, just because it takes a lot of effort to do it. The money does have to be spent in the designated census area that meets the poverty guidelines. Can't be spent anywhere in the city, it has to be beneficial to that neighborhood, a few requirements along that line. Can I answer any other questions?
Thank you. Councilman Witheldner?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm pretty much in total support of this project, however, I would like to, before we get into a motion, pretty much stress that I would like to see if this thing bears fruit, that all work be done by local contractors and we keep the business here in Mesquite. Is that, is this a possibility?
Ms. Hunt.
Thank you, Mayor and council. That isn't a possibility because of the state laws, the bids have to be done, and you can't limit them.
I might want to point out, too, that it is federal funding, which means we have to comply with federal data spake rules on wages and a few things like that, those drive the cost up. I would point out that the last major project we did in CDBG money was, in fact, the successful bidder was a local contractor, and so there's reason to believe that the local contractors are familiar with how to do these projects and would be very competitive.
And that's what the RFQ was going to be? I'm sure that'll separate. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Raxton?
No mind. Brian, would you elaborate a little more on the actual scope of this project? It's reduced considerably from the 700,000 down to the valuable grant now of 430,000. And there is a plan, I presume?
Yes, thank you, appreciate that. This isn't just a water play areas they're being called now. This will also take care of some of the other problems that we, difficulties that we have at the Haven Park. That is the pond, keeping the water fresh in there, putting a pump in there. A lot of the water play areas, as they're called now, and as was alluded to earlier, we do have a splash pad at the sport event complex, but this, we're proposing to be a water play area. It would be more of an open area. The idea is to have more people be able to come to an area and play with the water shooting here and there. The water would only go off unless it was activated, so there's no wasted water. The water would run from this play area through a little creek type of thing, you know, just a few inches deep, maybe six, eight inches, maybe a foot deep, and it would go into the pond. The pumps at the pond would be upgraded, and this would also be used to irrigate the rest of the park. So it'll be a total cycle. We will not be reusing the water in the play area, but that in a nutshell, with it going from $700,000 to 400,000, we'd like to propose, and we've talked about this, to not have any, a lot of play toys there. They're very expensive, but we could make them so that they could be added at future times with minimal cost. It's been asked also, you know, what additional staffing would be needed? As the splash pad at the sport event complex stands, there's no lifeguards needed. You know, we would hope that whoever would build this for us, would there be a warranty period at times? And we haven't had too much problem with the park itself and the water features, but in a nutshell, that's what it would encompass.
Any further questions for Mr. Dangerfield or Mr. Callahan? Mr. Raxton?
What additional incremental maintenance costs, ongoing maintenance costs would be involved here, including the cost of potable water?
The costs haven't been identified, and we were going to put that in the RFQ to identify what those costs would be. This is just an early stage part of this project. We'd like to just get some direction as if you'd want us to pursue it, and that's definitely something that needs to be identified in this study.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll seek a motion. Councilman Littman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to pursue option A, to create a request for qualifications document in order to begin the process of identifying the method of designing, building, and pricing the water play project area at Haven Trailhead Park.
Second that motion. We have a motion and a second call for the vote. Motion carries, thank you. Agenda item 17 is consideration of renewing the sponsorship agreement with the Long Drivers of America for 2012 events held at the Mesquite Sports and Events Complex, including the RE/MAX World Long Drive Championships and other qualifying events. Mr. Dangerfield.
Mayor and council, Mesquite has been a sponsor of this event for about 18 years. The Long Drivers of America hold several events throughout the year. They do their kickoff in March, they have an event in August, and then the World Championships will be next October. We're proposing that the sponsorship agreement as presented to you be approved, and if you have been answering any questions about what that sponsorship entails, the value of that sponsorship to the city, maybe I'd just go ahead and tell you. They have a, the Las Vegas Convention Visors Authority has the Joyce Julius Associates Company do an advertising value survey of this, and the impressions that comes from the exposure on ESPN, not just in the United States but throughout the world. The first five, it looks like they've, they have come in and they have adjusted some of the numbers since I first got it, but the value of just five broadcasts, including four international airings, is about $3.9 million. Last year, it was shown 20 times throughout the year, so when ESPN has some open time throughout the year, they will replay this. You'll also see it on ESPN's other networks, ESPN2. For the first time two years ago, they had it live on ESPN3.com, which had a... For the first time two years ago, they had it live on ESPN3.com, which had a great audience and another media to be able to expose Mesquite. And I do have a copy of the video here, and just what we get out of it is not just the logo impressions that we have stationed throughout the sports and event complex, but the city of Mesquite has three ads that we run ourselves. The Las Vegas Convention, Visitors Authority, has three more ads, and then they do two vignettes that go around and basically show what Mesquite's all about. We have, we've talked to their, the producers. We have Andy North, who's, you know, a very famous golfer and golf analyst, Art Selinger, John Buchegross with ESPN, and we talked to them, and we say, whenever you can mention Mesquite, we ask you to do that. And so a lot of times, they'll come back from a break, and they'll say, welcome to beautiful Mesquite. And it is basically a 90-minute infomercial on Mesquite mixed with golf. And it's a great opportunity that we have, and I've noticed when I've traveled throughout the country, and I say I'm from Mesquite, Nevada, and a lot of them have either seen this event on ESPN or have heard about the RE/MAX World Long Drive Championships. So anyway, if there's any further questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilman Rasmussen?
That's not a question so much as a, as a added information. I believe the LBCBA contributes about 130,000 or something like that...
I believe that's...
...to this event as well. So we're, we're their minor sponsor, getting a major piece of this production. I think this is, Mesquite does not advertise, the city of Mesquite does not advertise, and probably shouldn't, but for this amount of money and this amount of advertisement, this is, this is a huge... Well, the axiom is frequency and reach. Advertising is two components, frequency and reach. This gets both. Reach is unbelievable. Brazil, Israel, not that it probably helps us a lot, but again, and frequency is, is the other component, which again, I think this is a great deal.
Councilman Gus Davidson?
I'd just like to reinforce a little bit what my fellow councilman has just said. Two years ago, I had a group of people come to town. I didn't have them come to town. They came to town because they saw this on, on television in Sweden. We had a complete foursome of Swedish golfers who had the opportunity to play some golf football everywhere in town. This thing is actually, is, is, it gives us exposure to all the entire world. I mean, for what we're paying for it, it's virtually nothing. I mean, it's, this is a very good program.
Any further questions for Mr. Dangerfield? I do have one, a quick one. It probably doesn't have to do with... I'll hold that. We had a discussion with Mr., Mr. Selinger about the dust up there. We'll talk about that after. I guess that has nothing to do with this, so I'll keep on, on track. Any other questions? Councilman Rasmussen?
I'm ready to make a motion. I'd like to renew the sponsorship agreement with the Long Drivers of America for the 2012 events held at the sports, at the sports center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second call for the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 18 is discussion and possible direction to staff for the Pioneer Shared Use Path Improvement Project. Mr. Sawyer?
Yes, Mayor and Council. After the city council meeting, staff, council directed staff to go back and look at where we could put the money. Councilman Littman alluded to a, on Oasis Boulevard, there's a, there's a section of property there that runs up to Kitty Hawk. We've looked at that. We've met with Endo. Endo has said it looks good, but we still have to go through the process. We have to go through the, to the board to get this approved. We also looked at, right on the corner of West Pioneer and Falcon Ridge Parkway, there's a section of property there that does not have a trail on. And if they'll actually complete the trail there that goes clear up the pulte underneath the new interchange. So this is what staff's come up with. Staff's recommending that we go forward with this. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Mr. Littman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to commend staff for getting back and finding some of these solutions to what looked like to be a fairly difficult problem, and I think we're in the right direction. And again, I want to thank staff for what they've done on this.
Thank you. I concur with that as well, Mr. Sawyer. Councilman Haven?
That's, that's my comment as well. I've had a lot of citizens that couldn't be here, want me to express thank you to you and your staff for the revisit and the redesign, redirection they had. They really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll tell my staff.
Any further questions for Mr. Sawyer? If not, we will seek a motion. Councilman Littman?
Thank you, Mayor. I made a motion to direct staff to pursue the change of scope on the project, remove the Turtleback Road to Red Hills Parkway portion of the project and replace it with construction of a new 10-foot shared use path on the west side of Oasis Boulevard from Pioneer Boulevard to the existing sidewalk south of Oasis Business Park, and construction of a new 10-foot shared use path on the southeast corner of Falcon Ridge Boulevard and Pioneer Boulevard.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second call for the vote. Motion carries. Agenda item 19 is public comment. If you have a public comment, please step forward, share your name, where you're from, and we'll go from there. We do have a three-minute limit.
Good evening, Mayor. We're senior members of the council. Madam Clerk, I'm Rob Woodson. I'm Vice President of Regulatory Compliance for United Coin Machine Company. And just a few minutes ago, you approved our application to put games in at Peggy Sue's. My comment here is that during this process, I dealt with Laura Wolfie from your business license department, and she was extremely competent, extremely professional, and I think you're lucky to have her. And no, she's not related to me. I'll be contacting her again for another application. We'll be filing here in the next couple of months. That's what I wanted to tell you. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we will close this agenda item. Any adjourned...